Good. The flag's on there.
Um.
Jim has the flag.
Okay. We all here?
Can't see with the screen, who we all? Can you do it different?
I don't know why it's like that.
Yeah. All right, why don't we stand to do salute to the flag? Mr. Hall, you can lead us with your flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag. United States of America. To the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible. Free, legal, and justice for all.
Roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Mayor Leahy?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Ms. Clark?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Mr. Dillon?
Here.
Six present.
Open up with new business, Mr. Superintendent, update on temporary transportation policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dr. Hall, take us through the details, the request of the committee was that we continuously expand transportation as capacity allows, making sure that we're able to provide as close to the committee's standard transportation policy as possible. Previously, we moved to a temporary transportation policy for this year that has only providing transportation for grades one through six for students who lived more than two miles from their school. We believe we're able to expand that to include K through eight and to reduce the mileage down to 1.75. That's the recommendation before you for an update to the policy. We are committed to continuously analyzing it as we expand in-person learning and will bring back to you updates as we believe we can safely expand transportation if we believe we can do so going forward. Dr. Hall's available for any questions. Also, Transportation Director Dakota is also with us. You have his recommendation in writing in your packet. A recommendation would be approval of that update for transportation starting on April 5th.
So moved.
John, Ms. Martin, did you have further questions from before?
Actually, my only question would be what the percentage of students we're expecting on the 5th?
Dr. Gilery, can you provide that information or are you looking for how many will be riding school buses?
Well, I guess ultimately I want the total number and then how that's being accommodated by the buses. Ultimately, I want to know if there, if there's a specific percentage of students who are not able to accommodate with their transportation requests.
Okay, Mr. Dakota, do you want to answer the first part about transportation? And then, Dr. Gilery, if you can add anything around the total population?
Sure, thank you, Dr. Boyd. For April 5th, we have 1,960 students that will be transported.
Thank you, Mr. Dakota. Dr. Gilery, can you share what our total population is?
Yes, so as of right now, I think according to the memo, we're looking at roughly 50% of our present students that we're targeting for April 5th. So we're looking at about the 50% mark right now. These numbers continue to fluctuate on a daily basis as parents continue to make changes right up to the mark in our schools and school leaders are being overly accommodating to meet the varying needs of families. So they're exercising great flexibility in that. So we want to make sure that families understand that schools are ready and able to accommodate their in-person requests and are continuing to reach out. For those, we've seen even a double down of those recommendations from our teachers that have been working closely with families to try to encourage students that they feel need to be in person for that additional attention. So they're also taking those measures into account as well.
And, Mr. Dakota, so if we're at about 1,900, what's our traditional number of students?
In a regular, in a regular school year, we're on 7,800.
Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Dillon, you had your hand up?
I believe somebody put a motion out to approve, I was just seconding.
All right. I just had a, I have questions before we approve it, but Ms. Doherty, do you have questions still?
Yes, thank you, I have a couple of questions related to transportation and some related to the in-person. So if you don't mind, I could just go through them all. So with the transportation, I want to say thank you for the hard work and expanding it to K to eight. That was huge for me. I know that there's still many families who are having, have hardship because they don't have transportation. But I do, I see that movement and dropping it to 1.75. It's still a long distance when, you know, and when you think about that, our typical elementary students, they are entitled to a bus if they live 0.75 away from the school. And now it's still 1.75, but I understand that this is, you know, it's in flux as we get a better sense of how many kids are actually on those buses and to really stay true to the, as much as we can to giving spacing on the buses. And I wonder if Mr. Dakota could explain that for our, the millions of viewers that they would understand what we're doing in terms of safety about the bus. But in, my question with transportation is, what is the timeline for families? Like, are the families aware that they have transportation at this point? Have bus passes been sent out or will they be sent out prior to Monday when, when everybody's coming in? What is the timeline around the transportation? And, and if you could address some of the safety precautions that we are taking on the buses, I think that would be useful information for the public.
Mr. Dakota, if you could?
Absolutely. Concerning the, the safety concerns and what we've done is that, obviously, Desi has lifted the capacities on the buses where what that means is they feel that you could.
Looks like he froze because I'm not seeing any movement out of his camera. Dr. Hall, can you summarize for the committee? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, like, what would you like me to summarize, Dr. Boyd?
I believe the question was, what, what safety parameters and protocols are we going to continue to follow despite the fact that Desi has lifted them almost entirely for school buses?
Yes, I know one of the things that Mr. Dakota was looking at, which I found to be very important, was the spacing so we could contact trace who was around a particular student on a bus. Should they become positive? So for example, if we took it into effect that there may only be 20% right, you know, 20% no-shows on a bus, we really can't expand that number because we have to provide assigned seats. So if there's a positive, we know exactly who would have to quarantine around that area. Additionally, the windows are supposed to be kept open and people will be wearing masks and other cleaning is available for the buses before and after school.
Do you know about the timeline, Dr. Hall, in terms of the bus passes and when families are notified? If they have a seat on a bus?
I believe yesterday, Ms. Doherty, there was a call that went out to everyone that has a seat where the tech department did a mail merge to send out a notice. And I know that happened because the cabinet members were also on the call. So we knew what went out to the parents.
Can anybody hear me now or?
Yes.
Yep, we can now.
Can hear you, maybe keep the video off.
Okay. Dr. Hall is correct, a mail merge went out. Although kindergartners and first graders were, will be receiving physical pass, bus passes. The rest of the students in grades two to eight will be able, will be able to get on the front page of our website, enter in the six-digit student ID and the pertinent bus information will appear. That is the bus number, the, the location and the time.
Yep.
So that you're comfortable that all our families are going to be able to access that information? I'm thinking about our newcomers, English language learners, things like that.
Mr. Dakota? You're on mute.
I don't know why I keep on freezing, I'm in my office. Can you hear me all right?
Now we can, yep.
All right, I'm sorry. Miss Doherty, I, I think I got your question that kindergarten and first graders would receive a physical passes and the rest of the students in grades two to eight, I do feel confident that they will receive. We've made actually 87 changes today with parents calling us with address changes, alternate addresses that they would rather have their children go to either morning or afternoon. So I think it was a successful model for us to try. And that's something I'd like to go forward with in the, in the upcoming years as well. It's a lot better than sending out 8,000 passes in the mail where we usually get 500 of them back. And that's just wasted money and postage and what wasted money in paper.
Well, good, I hope it does work.
But it seems to be.
And I guess just my last comment to the transportation piece is, and I appreciate, Dr. Boyd, you mentioned this is going to be an ongoing analysis as we continue to try to get more of our students on buses who need them. The hardship cases will obviously be looked at, right? And what should families do if they are a hardship case? If they really want their child in school and they can't provide transportation? Should they be reaching out to their principals? What would be the best course or directly to transportation? What would be the best course for parents to go if they're a hardship situation?
Yeah, their first line is to always contact their principal and Mr. Dakota is in direct contact with every principal related to those cases. And then Mr. Dakota follows back on with the family if it is a hardship that's accommodated through transportation. So families, just contact your schools, talk to your principals and they know exactly what to do.
Thank you. And then if I could just jump over to the, the in-person chart that you gave us. If we could get another column added that actually does the addition for us, you know, that you have a column projected additional in-person enrollment. So I'm thinking those were additional students that were just added as we're expanding in-person. So that would mean adding the in-person enrollment as of March 29th with that number, correct? Did I do that correctly? Okay, so I'm just looking if you could have a column that added that for us. So we could look down and see very easily what number of students are in each school and what number is still being remote by school. And then the only other question, I understand this is still in flux, but it seems like we have to at some point put that line in the sand, like you're either in, you're either a zoomer or a rumor. I guess was the phrase someone told me. But you're either in person or you're going to be remote for a month as we agreed. Like Desi said, you have to give them an option to change their mind, but we have to at some point make a line. So I know that's changing, but I don't understand, one of the schools, the Butler, the total didn't add up. So is that because the numbers are in flux? So I added the number of students that were in person and the additional students that now want to be in person with the, the total number that we're going to continue to be remote and the number was not the same. It was nine students off by the number of capacity for the Butler School. So I just wanted to point that out. But I think if we add that column that does the addition for us, we can more easily see what those percentages are per school, which I think is important going forward.
Dr. Gilery, any concerns with that?
No concerns whatsoever.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I basically have the same comments as Ms. Doherty, just want to make sure that we do, look in on this next week, see how it's working, and I know you will. And make sure that, you know, any other hardship, chip cases, we can take a we can take a look at and make adjustments. So appreciate all the work that you've done, John, and your department and everyone that's worked on this with you, so.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question of Mr. Dakota while he's on the call? Um, so yes, thank you, Mr. Dakota. I received a call personally about the bus situation for my child and it was very helpful, you know, to, I appreciate that. I know everyone in the district is appreciative of this work. You said on April 5th, there's going to be 1,960 students riding the bus and that's K through four. So what will that go to on April 26th when we add fifth through eighth?
That's, I apologize, that is the total number, 1,960 is K to eight. So K to five, we're probably looking at about 1,400, 1,500, I would imagine around that. My apologies.
That's fine, thank you for clarifying.
I was, I was looking at, I was just looking at my screen, I said the number and I saw 1,960, so I apologize.
Thank you.
But I, I, I understand the committees, you know, we want to make sure we try to get on as many students as we possibly can, including the hardship cases. And obviously after a few days of, after, I'm looking hopefully Wednesday, Thursday, getting a count from the drivers to see who actually is taking buses, try to get some of the names that are not on the bus, send them to the principals for verification that in fact these students are not taking buses and then move on to maybe a 1.60 or 1.50 and just continually grow, grow, grow the population.
And, and just to be sure I understand, the students who are riding the bus, they've been informed that they have a bus route based on either a phone call or some communication. But the, where would the second through eighth graders go on the website to check in on their bus stop?
It is right on the front page of the website, on the bottom right is the bus icon. They click that, they put in, they enter their student ID, which is used for their own school computer or lunches. And once they put that in, it'll give them the relevant information they need for bus transportation.
Perfect, thank you, I see it now.
All set?
Yes.
Thank you, I'd like to, like to personally thank Pharoah Roberts and curriculum and John Overton and Technology. Both of them have been a great help in getting this done. This was a huge chore and both of them did a great job.
Thank you. And thanks again, Mr. Dakota for all your work, so.
Thanks, appreciate it.
All right, so we have a motion approved by Mr. Dillon and seconded by?
No, Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon.
Oh, all right, Mr. Dakota, seconded by Mr. Dillon, roll call.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
Yes.
Six she's approved.
Okay. Four two, school assignment policy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, this is the first reading of the policy that the committee at our last meeting forwarded to the subcommittee. We're bringing it to you as part of this special meeting in lieu of doing an additional subcommittee. First reading, it'll come back to you with whatever adjustments you make. If you're so inclined to approve the first reading, it'll come back to you for final reading next week is our plan. Ms. Phillips is here to share that first reading with you. She's also supported by Attorney Mosher Canty as well as Ms. Duda, Director of Family Resource Center. If there are any questions, Ms. Phillips?
Is she on mute?
Ms. Phillips, if you're speaking, we can't hear you, are you on mute?
Yes, I'm on mute.
All right.
Thank you, Dr. Boyd, school committee members. So here on the screen, you'll see the five areas, the recommendations that were discussed at the equity, at the last equity subcommittee meeting. We did share that there's additional work, further work that we would like to do and bring back to you in December. But these were the recommendations that we're making for the 2021, 22 school year. So I will take you through the version really quickly to show you where the changes were made. So on, on the section kindergarten through grade eight, the red language here, we have the section diversity balance. And one thing I do want to clarify for you, and I've highlighted here, it says new assignments and transfers must meet requirements of diversity balance. I want to clarify that the, the voluntary compliance plan, the DSEG plan, requires us to have a minority, non-minority balance. The broader diversity balance is a priority established through the Equity and Engagement Office. And so I can clarify that here because it is important to know, for our families and community to know that the minority, non-minority balance is, has been designated to us through the DSEG consent order. But the balance based on ethnicity, gender, I'm, I'm sorry, not ethnicity, gender, language, economic status, that's a priority of, of our equity office and our district. So I will keep going here. And this area speaks to the school assignment lotteries. So we had discussed that where there are more applications, early applications for certain schools, if they exceed the number of seats available, we do want to have a, a staggered lottery to ensure that there are opportunities for our highly mobile students and our newcomer students to still be able to have access to these seats. And this is the language that sets that priority. And then here, the, the weighted priorities, you see siblings first, McKinney-Vento homeless status second. And then we also have our, our minority, non-minority, that's the language of the consent order. Although I've, I've put it here as race, ethnicity, but to be specific, the consent order specifies minority, non-minority. This is the transportation section, I can adjust that based on tonight's decision. And I can say the district will, will utilize the new policy adopted for the 2021, 22 school year. Or actually, no, we just adopted one for the remainder of the school year, is that correct, Dr. Boyd? Okay, so I'll keep this language here that we're going to utilize the previous policy unless a new policy is adopted. And the previous policy is the one that designated the 0.75 for elementary and then the 1.5 for the upper grades. Again, for the transfer applications where there are additional seats available, we'll also consider the lottery, siblings, McKinney-Vento, status, homeless students, and then the minority, non-minority, race, ethnicity balance. And then we also have here the middle school feeder pattern. As we discussed at the subcommittee, many families are choosing their elementary school based on the middle school pattern. And that's creating some inequities in our school as relates to economic integration especially. And so we want to make sure that families are able to choose the elementary school that best suits their child without having to think about the fifth grade. So we would like to bring another recommendation back to you for the 22, 23 school year. But we would like families to know that, 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 that the feeder pattern is being reviewed. But all current fourth graders will be continuing forward into the fifth grade based on the current feeder pattern. And then one thing I realized that I would like to bring up tonight is that for the high school, it says house placements will take into consideration McKinney-Vento, foster care, special education, gender, and English learner status. We want to make sure that we also add here the minority, non-minority balance per the desegregation consent order. So those are the changes that are reflected from the prior school committee meeting. And I can stand to any questions, I also have Dr. Duda here with me and Attorney Mosher Canty for any questions you may have.
Mr. Mayor?
Do you want to, Mr. Dillon?
Thank you. I just had, I mean, looking at the diversity balance piece, I know you mentioned that it comes from the consent decree, that wording. But are we getting ourselves into a situation where a kid may be told that the school that their parent thinks is best for them, they can't go there because of the color of the skin? I mean, is, are those scenarios that could happen with that as a, an indicator on this list? Can anybody touch on that?
Yeah, I think probably, Ms. Mosher Canty, can you share kind of how that consent decree operationalizes and the rights therein?
Well, first of all, under the original consent decree, parental preference is number one as a factor for placement. Then you have, I'll just read them so they can give you a little mall. Then it's space available, so there needs to be space. Then it's the special needs, if there's some sort of special need of the student such as actually being a special needs student or having a language issue, then there's sibling preference, then there's minority balance, place of residence, the random lottery, and then waiting list. So when we look at it, we have four factors here that are listed in that. It's space available, which is first and foremost, so there has to be space, even though every, you could have every person in the district want to come in and go to one school. Okay, because they heard that's, you know, the premier school of the District of Lowell. And it doesn't mean they can all go because it's all about what is the space. Then Ms. Duda needs to take into account how many spaces there are actually available in that school in order to make that determination. Then she has to look at sibling preference and then we go to diversity balance or what's considered minority, non-minority, the minority, non-minority balance. So theoretically, we, Ms. Duda has to place students according to the balance. That is after, after sibling, after sibling and to make sure that there's space. So if in fact, there could be one, typically it's the other way, that students are basically in order to make sure that we have a balance that reflects in a zone in every school in that zone, they, they will need to, she will need to consider their, basically their race and their minority status and to make sure that it's reflective of the zone. And that's something she has been doing all along and that is something they've been doing since 1988, 1986, whenever the non-minority balance came. And that is something they've been doing since 1988, 1986, whenever the, um, non-minority balance came, came about. So, you know, theoretically, they're going to make a decision, we're not going to, nobody's going to come right out and say, you're not being placed at that school because you're a non-minority or you're, you're being placed, this is where space is. So let's consider space, is that one of the parents' preferences, is that one of the parents' first three choices? And then is, is there space after you've put siblings in? And then that she does have to consider the minority, non-minority balance. So it's always been a factor. But that's what the descent decree, that's the DSEG decree required of us.
I, I, yeah, I, I understand all that. It totally makes sense. Um, I just, you know, when does that? When do we get past all, all those requirements of the DSEG, um, decree? I mean, I, we've, we've seen a lot of numbers, uh, throughout our district that say we're, I mean, the city is extremely spaced out diversity wise as is, and our schools are as well. So we're following that decree from 30 years ago. Technically, we're telling kids that the color of their skin can mean whether or not they get into the school.
Traditionally, it wasn't necessarily the color of their skin, it was, it was based on language. So what happened is it came about because at the time of the, the desegregation plan, it was because the non-minority individuals were basically housed in schools. And the newcomers who spoke another language such as Cambodian, or Laotian, or Vietnamese, or Spanish, different dialects of Spanish, they weren't being housed in public schools. They were being housed at the YMCA for school, they would be being housed in different places. So actually, it was a, it was a lingu- a linguistic minority plan. It has come to be about either you declare yourself a minority or you're a non-minority. And the dissent decree, and I will say, you are right, our schools are fairly balanced, but they're balanced because the decree has been being followed for 30 years. Or four, actually forty years, almost forty years. And it continues to be followed. And every time people shift and move in the city, I mean, there, there are certain probably pockets of Lowell that you can see still house a, a large minority of a minority, right? You can, and if we went to neighborhood schools, that minority would all be in that one school. So that is why we continue to have the plan that we have and continue to follow the DSEG plan.
I, I, you know, I understand what you're saying, but that just doesn't, I mean, it, just because minority used to me, mean that you can't speak English, apparently? Is that worth it?
It was, it was population of individuals, it meant variety.
Yeah, I know, but the bottom line is today, we're telling kids that if they're either a minority or a non-minority, they may not be able to go to the school of their choice, both directions.
That is true. Uh, that, that is true because we're obligated to fi- to follow the DSEG plan. We are obligated to follow it.
No, I know, but so when does that end? I mean?
When, when we can make some sort of assurance to the government and the district, the federal district court that we have a, a plan that says we are as diverse as can be, we rep, every school is equal across the board, and that no school is going to be different from the other, and we, and we won't swing that way.
So until, so until then, we have to tell kids that because they're either a minority or not, that they can't go to a, a particular school, especially one that's like closest to their house?
We're not telling them that. They're reading it in the plan.
I know, but I'd be, I'd want to know.
Okay, well.
That, if that's the reason why my kid didn't get into a school, I'd be furious. Is that even legal?
It is legal, but the, we signed the plan, the, the government told us it was a legal plan.
I know, and how long ago was that? I mean, it, it's.
Eighteen eighty-six, nineteen eighty-seven?
It sounds crazy that we are telling kids based on the color of their skin that they can't.
And we're not telling them.
I know, that's even worse that we're not telling them.
They're declaring them a minority, they're declaring themselves a minority.
I know, but it's even worse that we're not telling them that that's why they're getting into a school, in my opinion. I mean.
What we're telling them is that every school ideally needs to represent the, the public school population across the board.
Of course, of course. But where does that line get drawn now? When we get to like ten, that 10% above or below, is it a hard line as soon as that gets hit? That we just?
If, if I could, I think I, if I could, Attorney Mosher Canty, I think, I think here what you have is you have a, a court ordered consent decree. But ultimately, the committee would have to determine if they want to bring it back to the court and say the circumstances have changed here, and that the committee wants to move out of the consent decree. There's pros and cons to both sides of that. Uh, I, I probably would not be recommending right now that you make the decision here, but certainly we could bring back to the committee with further study on it, on what pros and cons are. Most, most districts, uh, opt to continue with their consent decree when they're finding progress, but that would be a decision of the committee at a future date. Committee member Dylan, so if there is interest in, uh, discussing that further, I might suggest that we do that, uh, with.
Yeah, yeah, totally. Uh, we don't need to have that discussion tonight, but I don't know, that, you know. It, regardless of how the whole decree has worked out, that's where we're at. And that's, you know, that, that, I don't think that makes sense in, in any way, um, in order, like, to have that language in there. I don't know. Uh, but we, we can certainly have more talks about it. Thank you.
I can give it to you, step that back away from your microphone again, please, it's blocking my speech.
Get Terry's speaker down, yep, sorry.
Well.
I'm too close, I know, I know, I get too close. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Um, could I ask, uh, to this superintendent, to, uh, Ms. Phillips? So I know that during some of our prior conversations, we were talking, you know, over and above the minority, majority, um, balance that we were talking about, you know, taking into account, um, the racial diversity beyond simply, you know, comparing minority to ma- majority. Um, and also incorporating the economic diversity as well. So if, are those not reflected in this? Is that something we're going to do moving forward?
Who do you want to answer the question?
Uh, Ms. Phillips, unless the superintendent wanted to.
Sure, thank you, Ms. Martin. Ms. Phillips, if you could.
Yes, so, so that is still a priority of the district. Um, one of the things that my team looked at is what can we operationalize, right? And, um, the way that we are calculating, um, economically disadvantaged is different. And the question, um, that we really had to work through was whether we would know before students were enrolled if they were economically disadvantaged. So, um, on the registration application, we have added some questions. But until we can truly understand if those questions, which are self-reported, have a high correlation with students ultimately, ultimately being identified as economically disadvantaged, we didn't want to put it as an advantage for this year's lottery. So it's something that we're asking, um, we're going to study it, and we will bring it back with our recommendation in December. However, um, right now, we are, um, identifying economically disadvantaged after the school year starts. And so that would be a challenge for us because we hold the lotteries and do the assignments over the summer.
Okay, so, and we're still doing that using the, um, the, the system that replaced free and reduced lunch, right? So we're able to get it directly from the Commonwealth?
Um, that, that's what we're use, that's what you, what we're using for meals. But we are asking some other questions such as, um, Medicaid, or Medicare, Medicaid. I keep. That's a question that, that, and we're asking maybe a couple of other questions, but those are self-reported questions. And so if, we want to make sure once we give, you know, an advantage to balance economic integration that, that we're able to accurately correct, um, collect information.
But, but we're able to, to verify that, right? I mean, people.
Yes.
But we have access to all the databases now, right?
We can verify it after the school year begins.
Okay.
But we haven't, we're not confident in the school assignment office that we can verify that prior to the start of school.
Okay.
So that's something we need to ask the questions, study it, you know, see who ended up being, um, direct certified, right, through the formal process, and then see if it's comparable.
Okay, so then when we're looking at this again in December, we'll be looking at some increased opportunities or ideas at least behind the economic diversity as well as the, the racial diversity.
Yes.
Excellent. Okay, thank you very much.
Uh, thank you. I, I wanted to say first off, this, I, I appreciate all the work everybody's put into this. I think that, uh, from the outset, I felt that our goals were similar, that we were looking to, you know, protect diversity and look at other factors such as economics in terms of how we balance our schools. And I, I still feel that we're doing that with this document. I do have some questions though, because when you talk on the first page about the K through eight, and then you numbered the factors, one through four, that, I, I assumed that was the weighted, you know, you put the priority was number one, space availability, number two, sibling preference. But then later in the document, the two times that you reference the lotteries, right? You said the lottery will be a weighted lottery with the following priorities. And then you list, and this appears twice because it's under, um, the K, then it's under grades one through eight. The same paragraph about the, the lottery will be a weighted lottery. Then you list the weights, you don't mention, uh, proximity to school. And I'm wondering, did you purposely not mirror what happens at the beginning of the document, the one through four? When you're specifically addressing the lottery, because I think, uh, I, you know, I have concerns about the lottery. As you know, we had a very ambitious, uh, plan with the lottery when we started school this last year, uh, under these horrible conditions of the pandemic and trying to figure out what we were going to do. And now we're talking about three staggered lotteries. So I, again, the concerns, and I'm sure there's things you've learned by what we went through in the fall, that you feel more confident to continue to have these lotteries, but that's kind of aside from the language piece. Uh, and I'm just wondering, uh, Ms. Phillips, if you purposely didn't include those four bullet items when you referenced the lottery, and did you purposely leave out proximity? Because that's always been one of the most frustrating things for parents. As Mr. Dylan mentions, if a parent, you know, this is my first school, I, this is where I want my child to go. And then to get a no, or to be told your waitlist is very disappointing, but it's even more disappointing when you can see the school from your home, you know, so proximity, I think, needs to continue to be in there. And I, so I just wanted to ask for clarification about those decisions in the language of the policy. Uh, but then I, I do have some other concerns about implementation that I, but I wanted to stop and let you address that piece of it for me in terms of the weighted factors and how it's different at the beginning when they're numbered one through four than the body of the policy when you talk specifically about the lottery.
Ms. Phillips, you good?
Yep, thank you, uh, School Committee Member Dori. So we can, we can revisit that for you, and I can have a definitive answer for you at the next meeting when we bring it back for the second reading. I do want to mention that we've got citywide schools, right, which are different from, um, non-citywide schools that might have a lottery. And so that's the one thing I, I want to think a little more about and bring back, um, to you because the citywide schools are there to serve the city, right? Whereas we do have two to three, um, non-citywide schools that typically have a lottery, a kindergarten lottery that we protect at Bill. The Maury, most years has a lottery, but not every year. And, um, I think there's one more school I'm, I'm, that's slipping my mind. But then we have, you know, the Pine Arts, which is a citywide school. And so that may not qualify for, uh, you know, a proximity advantage. But, um, Pawtucketville and Maury, you know, possibly would.
But I mean, it's the same situation. I understand that the Pine is a citywide school. But if you are a family that lives across the street from the Pine Arts, and that's the school you want your child to go to, it seems like proximity should still be weighted in, but so, so it does, so I understand now why it was left off for the lottery, but I think that it's, it's going to be very confusing for many of our families, this whole school assignment policy. And wherever we can be consistent, I think would really be helpful. And, and that leads me to my final two comments. One, in terms of communication to families, I was thinking, so I'm a native English speaker, right? I'm also college educated. I found it challenging to completely understand all the moving parts of this assignment policy. And I get that it is complex, but I'm wondering if we could do some kind of flow chart or something that would visualize for families and, and maybe put it on the website under school assignments or registering for school, whatever. A place that our families could see, these are the steps you go through. Just something that's not just written narrative, but in a way that visually explains for our families the process and the lottery. And I understand this, the whole attempt at fairness, that's what we're trying to do. We want balanced schools, we want to do it in a way that's fair, right? And that's, that's the challenge that we're all facing. The other piece that concerns me, and maybe you've already thought about this, I'm, I'm sure, uh, Dr. Duda has given this great thought in terms of implementation. And how do we really, you know, is there software now that as she's placing somebody real time into the daily or, but whatever school, that those numbers are going to constantly be, you know, in terms of all those weights and how that fits in. So those would be, but that's really not specific to the policy. My concern's really with the policy, uh, like I said, I think we've talked a lot about this in subcommittee. It, just to be consistent and so that everybody understands what the weights are, and there's a fair process in how that's going to be handled. But the implementation part is, I think, also of concern and the, the communication. Thank you.
And if I, I may, um, School Committee Member Dori, you know, your, your questions are right on. Those are the same questions that we asked even before we brought this policy. Can we operationalize all of this? How are we going to communicate this? And one of the steps, um, we are having to take is to create, um, like a data studio for Dr. Duda to be able to, um, see each school's balance, right, in real time as she's, as she's placing. So that is, that is a change that we have already, um, discussed with the data office to build for her as part of this process.
So one last thing, do you think we could have some kind of flow chart in time for next week? Cause I know that, um, we need to vote finally, make a final vote next week on this. I, I just think that would be helpful, you know, to really have an under, for our families to have an understanding.
Any other questions? I just had a couple of concerns about when we're doing the three lotteries, what do you mean by mid August? Cause we start school, you know, at the end of August. So is that pushing it? Should we be a little bit closer to beginning of August so people can prepare? What is, what does that actually mean, the final lottery?
So the, the mid-August is to provide some flexibility. We do want to place students as soon as possible, as early as possible. Um, but that's, that's more for, for, um, you know, flexibility as we roll out this new process. But the, you know, the, the priority is to place as early as possible.
Okay, so what does that mean though? We, we would probably start school, what, the 30th, the 31st next year? So we're talking people would know by the 16th, 17th?
Um, at the latest.
Okay. Uh, if we could do it a week earlier, I think that would be better, because people are going to have anxiety and trying to get them placed. And if we can try to do it closer to the beginning of August, I think that might reduce some anxiety. That'd be my only suggestion. And then, so we're going to review this again next week?
Yes, so I will, um, the proximity to school and, um, double check all of our dates. double check all of our dates. And I also wanted to add the minority, non-minority language to the houses for the high school. So I will share with you any changes that are made using the track changes so that you, that you're able to follow what changed from this version to the version we're presenting next, next week.
All right, and that's what you call in the second report that we got, this report, that's the track report?
Yeah, and it'll say the second, you know, changes made since the first reading.
All right, any other questions on the assignment policy? Chief, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So getting back to the whole neighborhood situation, is this, am I hearing this correctly, that it, that doesn't get a high listing on priorities in terms of which, where, how close you are to a particular school?
Ms. Phillips?
I'm sorry, the, the first part of the question cut out for me.
Okay, so, so let's just say I live in Centerville, and I want to have my, my, my child go to the Green Hills because it's, it's literally two blocks away from my house. But because of whatever reasons, I can't get my child into that school, which makes no sense to me at all, but where in the process does the proximity to the building, to the school enter whether they, that child gets into that school?
So, so we do take proximity into account. Dr. Duda, do you want to share this? So there's the regular assignment process, and then there's the lottery process where it's a high-demand school. So, so that's kind of the difference. But do you want to speak to the, how we take into account proximity to the school and the regular assignment?
The non-minority assignment? Thank you, Chief Phillips. So we always look at space availability first, and then sibling preference, and then proximity to a student's home. So think of it almost as like the tie-breaking piece of information I'm looking at when I'm looking at a regular school assignment. The goal is to keep the children as close to the, the home school as, as possible. It's not to put them further away.
Okay. I'm sure some parents are going to be very happy to hear that. Thank you, thank you, Dr. Duda.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions before we vote?
Mr. Mayor, I just, I was looking at my notes from the February second meeting, and I, I just want to say, I really appreciate the work that's gone into this policy, you know, as we know, the, that really the goal is that we're, we're trying to make our schools more reflective of our Lowell community as a whole in this effort to be diversity on many levels. And I think that this is moving in, in the direction, you know, we understand it's, it's not something that can happen overnight. And I think in here, I think I also, at that February second meeting, you know, proximity, it has been something that is important to this committee. And I think is something that we're hearing is still something that's part of the decision-making process. And I think this is really moving us in the right direction. And I just want to say thank you, thank you to everyone for all of the hard work that's gone into this. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, so I need a motion to take as a report of progress?
Through the first reading, Mr. Mayor, it'll be a motion to approve the first reading.
Okay.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Ms. Clark, seconded by Mr. Dakota. Roll call. Motion to approve the first reading, twenty twenty-one school assignment policy by.
Does that, can I ask a question? Does that mean we're approving it as it is? Because I, I do have concerns about that.
Yeah.
Lottery piece not saying proximity. So I just want to clarify what I'm actually voting.
Right, we're approving the first reading, there'll be changes, and we'll come back to the final reading next week.
Okay.
Final and second.
So do, do they want that added to the motion that with changes coming from the final?
Sure, motion approved first reading, twenty-one, twenty-two school assignment policy with changes forthcoming.
To the fin, for the final.
For the final. Thing.
Reading.
Reading. So that was approved by Ms. Clark. Roll call.
Ms. Darty?
Yes.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes, sorry.
Ms. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Mr. Dillon?
No.
Five days, one day approved.
Communications, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, this is a communication from the Urban Superintendents Network, which we signed on to in Lowell Public Schools regarding the MCAS testing and a request for further waiver from that as discussed at a prior meeting. So the recommendation is just to receive it and place it on file.
Questions on that? Motion approved by?
Motion to approve.
Yeah, motion approved by Mr. Dillon, seconded by Mr. Dakota. All those in favor? Any other questions for tonight? Motion approved, I mean, adjourned by?
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, seconded by Ms. Clark, thank you. Work, everybody.